Okay. Are you saying the camera angle's not what you want it to be?
It just, it's not showing the picture at all.
Is it getting the audio? Okay. All right. All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, welcome everyone to the Board of Supervisors December ninth, twenty twenty four, special meeting regarding the Golden Pheasant Bridge discussion and the alternative analysis report that we have received from PennDOT. We don't have any announcements at this time. Okay, so we'll move right into action items and just to give um folks present here in the room and anyone joining us remotely some context here. And for those of you who checked out the township's website, a lot of uh supporting documentation was made available for the public review in preparation of our meeting this afternoon. Uh but the context is back in twenty 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 two, PennDOT approached the township and um informed the township that they wanted to do a project in connection with the Golden Pheasant Bridge and they scheduled a meeting with section one oh six parties and these are um parties who um you know, live within a certain distance of the bridge um as well as the municipality. The section one oh six parties relate to historic resources um that might be adversely affected as a result of this project. Um and PennDOT was is required under the law to have a meeting where con- section one oh six consulting parties are present. That meeting did take place on October twentieth, twenty twenty two. It was a virtual meeting and it was attended by the full Board of Supervisors who at the time um was Rich, Jim Helms and myself um and our township manager at the time. There were also um consulting parties, including residents of the township. Um the Tinnicum Civic Association um board was represented. The Golden Pheasant Inn was represented um by, you know, members or agents of theirs attending the meeting on their behalf. Um, following that meeting, we're at the close of that meeting. Well, I'll back up. At that meeting, PennDOT proposed six alternatives um in addressing what they defined at the time to be the purpose of the project and the need of the project. Um, at the time, PennDOT's, PennDOT identified four distinct needs. They described a substandard bridge width, a substandard horizontal curve radius, a substandard site distance and substandard design speed. Under project purpose, their stated purpose, um and these are my own words, it's not verbatim, um was basically to accommodate trucks greater than forty five feet in length um on, on that bridge. So, following that meeting, the township submitted a letter um and asked that our letter be considered as a part of the, the public record and in the one oh six process. The township did that in, in a letter dated November third, twenty twenty two, and I believe that letter was included in the materials put online.
Correct.
Okay, um. And then PennDOT kind of went back to the drawing board. Um, we had a conversation, the board had a meeting with PennDOT back in April, they wanted to um have a discussion about potential right of ways um around additional signage at the Golden Pheasant Bridge. Um and just, it was a more informational purpose type of meeting and we haven't heard anything from them until recently when we've received um their revised alternatives analysis report. Um, and I, I believe it's very clear from the report that PennDOT took very seriously the feedback that the municipality offered um following their, the first kind of project proposal. And I will just summarize um for the benefit of conversation here. They have revised the purpose and the need. So in this new revised alternatives analysis, the per- project purpose is now stated as to provide a safe and reliable crossing over the Delaware Canal. And project needs, they, they list three of them. The first is um addressing recurring crashes and crash damage. The second is insufficient driver predictability slash expectancy. And that relates to site distance deficiencies and sharp and tight horizontal approach geometry. And the third is damaged roadside barrier systems and substructure elements. So the explicit um explicit reference to accommodating these large trucks is not included in this, in this latest alternatives analysis report. PennDOT proposed um six alternatives, the first being kind of having no bridge at all. Uh, the, the second is um is doing nothing. The third is a rehabilitation of the bridge. The fourth is, fourth alternative is widening the existing bridge. The, the fifth one is replacing the bridge, but keeping the existing alignment. And alternative number six is replacing the bridge and modifying the alignment, kind of straightening out the bridge. Their conclusion is their alternative number three for rehabilitation is what they are concluding is recommended as the preferred alternative. Um, as they determine that it, alternative three is shown to meet or improve the project needs while reducing future maintenance costs and minimizing impacts to resources. And that is resources kind of in that surrounding area. So the purpose of this meeting, well, when we received this alternatives analysis report, we were given until, I think, December twenty, twentieth um to provide feedback and provide a comment from the mu- like official comment from the municipality to PennDOT. We have asked for an extension of that. We've been given until January third, twenty twenty five to provide the municipality's feedback and it is important to this board that our feedback reflect concerns um eh of the community. So um we have provided the alternatives analysis report to our public works department. We've also provided this report to our police department. Um, as I'm sure you all can appreciate both of these departments, um particularly our police department, a lot of the resources are, are kind of wrapped up in dealing with truck accidents on this bridge and trucks getting stuck on the bridge. Um so this is a this board is soliciting input from within the municipality as well as um from our residents. So I think, should we? Yeah.
I, I kind of remember, we didn't discuss the traffic lights so far.
Yeah, so we can, we can go through in more detail what um alternative number three looks like. Alternative number three, this is the rehabilit- rehabilitation. It includes minor bridge work, installation of new traffic signals and some approach roadway work. The approach pavement would be reconstructed within two hundred feet of each side of the bridge, including driveway adjustments for the Sandcastle Winery and the tow path parking area slash boat launch access. Proposed pavement markings would also be within the roadway reconstruction limits, including stop bars that are located approximately one hundred thirty feet from the bridge on the south approach and one hundred fifty feet from the bridge on the north approach. The existing stop bars are approximately thirty eight feet from the bridge on the south approach and sixty two feet from the bridge on the north approach. Proposed traffic signals would be placed at each approach at the Sandcastle Winery driveway entrance and at the tow path parking area slash boat launch access. So that's four traffic signals.
But then they
It's actually eight, it's eight, it's eight, it's like four areas that are signaled. Excuse me. This alternative includes replacement of guide rail at each corner of the bridge. For the concept plans, the appendix B, the estimated cost of this alternative is three hundred fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollars.
Now, they also mentioned back at that meeting in April that they would be changing, I think I did mention that, just to reiterate, they were going to change the aprons and approaches in order to accommodate the WB fifty truck. Again, WB sixty seven would not be able to make it around WB fifty is the forty five foot long trailer that they restrict the road to. And um eh from the diagrams, I see that's from the nose to the tail of the trailer. Eh it's really big mentioning the forty two and a half feet and the WB sixty seven being your fifty three foot long trailer with a road tractor on it, so you know what we're talking about WB sixty seven and WB fifty. So as I recall from that meeting, we're gonna put those eight lights in there. We had to get easements from the Sandcastle, or not the Golden Pheasant at least. And I, I guess the property owner that's just south of the uh Sandcastle that we were to obtain those easements.
And they, they did not have the design completed to define which properties specifically needed to be used.
And they have they yet?
I haven't, I've never received the information.
And there's question, there's also a floating question is that who's gonna pay for these traffic lights? And your feeling is that they would pay for the installation, but then would be responsible for maintenance?
My understanding from the last PennDOT meeting was that they were seeking funds to do the installation of all the improvements. But they were always, they were looking for the township not only to pres- provide the easements and obtain the easements, but they were also looking for the township to maintain these signals.
Yeah, we don't have a solicitor here, so we don't know if we'd run into any kind of legal issues obtaining those easements. We could.
So it all depends on the cooperation of the landowners where they're putting the permanent design facilities.
So the one traffic light is a hundred feet south of where the stop sign is right now approximately, which would be about square in the middle of what the main dining area of the Golden Pheasant is. Okay, just to give an idea of the, the logistics of the intersection, what's going on down there. Okay.
So in the meeting that we had in April, um and it was a, I think it was a phone, were we all on the phone? I know I was on the phone. Yeah. It was a, a one of us raised the question of, are there, is there ever a circumstance where a traffic signal um is not the maintenance of a tra- traffic signal is not the responsibility of a mun- of a municipality? And we were told from PennDOT um that, that there are no such instances, that every traffic signal is maintained, the cost of maintenance is carried by the municipality. And they, it is very expensive to maintain a traffic signal, a single one, and that's what we have now. And I don't think any of us um are interested in, in taking on even one more traffic signal, let alone eight. But I think I'm getting ahead of kind of the whole discussion here. One other um comment in the alternatives analysis report on page nine, it PennDOT describes how alternative number three, which is the rehabilitation, addresses the project needs. And I'll just say that here for um informational purposes. Alternative three would reduce the risk of recurring crashes by having the stop bars relocated approximately one hundred thirty and one hundred, one hundred fifty feet from the bridge on the approaches, removing the stop signs and adding traffic signals. This would improve driver predictability slash expectancy and mitigate the site, site distance deficiencies. This alternative would a, would accommodate vehicle sizes up to WB fifty, which are the fifty foot long tractor trailer trucks. Their report says fifty foot. No utility or
It's a WB fifty, it's a forty two and a half feet trailer, which is the only, it's the only legal vehicle that fits under their forty five feet trailer restriction.
So that includes the cab.
Okay.
That's, that's why I said.
Yeah, no utility or permanent right of way impacts are anticipated. A temporary detour would be needed during construction. The commercial establishments of the Sandcastle Winery and the Golden Pheasant Inn would have access maintained to them during construction. The estimated service life of this alternative is one hundred years. However, since alternative three utilizes the existing stone masonry abutments, more future maintenance and repair to the abutments and wing walls is anticipated compared to alter- compared to alternatives five and six. And alternative three would meet the project needs. So um, I think having given that background information in the context, I think it would be a good time to just open the floor up for public comment. And for those who haven't been here before during these meetings, or if it's been a while, for public comment, we ask that you come to the microphone, write your name down and then state your name. Um, so any public comment?
I make one clarification.
Of course, yes, yes.
Uh, I just wanted to clarify that the, the request here uh was for the PA State Historic Preservation Officer to respond to these analysis options. Uh, they have thirty days to do it, which they, they did grant an extension to the township, as Eleanor mentioned, till January sixth to respond. However, the SHPO officer had already issued as of December third, their response concurring with a rehabilitation alternative number three. So I, I'm not, I'm not sure that if the comment is gonna change what their uh decision is going to be, but I just wanted to point out that they did provide a response already in, in less than their time period that they were supposed to have comments back.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's David Thompson. Uh, my wife and I, Karen. Uh, we are the current owners of the uh Golden Pheasant Inn. Uh, we purchased it back in September and this is all new to me, so I'm just sitting here absorbing, taking it all in. Um, I will tell you, our, our concern is just with alternative three, one, the traffic lights. And I agree with the cost of those for the township to maintain is extensive. I think it takes away from the historical value and the, 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 the look of the, the Golden Pheasant that we're working very hard on to maintain and to make better uh and, and show that building as a historic piece of property in Bucks County. Um, and that's one of the things that my wife and I are adamant about is maintaining the historical value of that property. I think with having traffic lights there, easements, it's gonna, it's going to cause major problems for our business. Uh, just because of taking away the, the much needed uh parking that we, that is so limited there uh all the time. Uh, with, with abutments being there, with traffic lights, I don't know how, you know, what, what the plan is, but I just think that is, is, is going to hurt our business tremendously. Um, currently, I know the tractor trailer issue is, is rampant. It's, it's, if it's not every day, it's three times a day. Tractor trailers going across, not properly signed up at, at north or south end of, of uh Route thirty two. The, the trucks don't see the signs or don't read the signs, so I, I may be repeating what the previous owners had already said. But um eh there's, there's nothing that, that indicates to them that I've seen that says you can't go down this, this road because there's a bridge there that's not gonna let you over. I've seen tractor trailers up on their ve- rear wheels going across that bridge across the top of it with it this way. It's it's really, i- it's, it's scary and it's somebody's gonna get hurt and it's gonna destroy the bridge. Um, personally, I think they should just replace the whole thing. That's my personal feeling. It's inadequate for the, the times that we have, if they're gonna allow these trucks to go to, to continue to go down and up Route thirty two. I mean, I could go on and on about my feelings about this, but our main thing is to, to, is to maintain the, the historical integrity of that property and make it better. One of the biggest issues that we have are tractor trailers that know they can't get over once they get down there and they start backing up and they back across our sand mound, they go through our fence. There's, there's, we have property damage all the time. I got Cr- Craig here is our, our maintenance eh guru and contractor and he's constantly up there fixing poles and things since we bought it because you can just see the tracks where tractor trailers are trying to make K turns to get away from that bridge at night. So I don't think it's a solution. That's just my personal opinion, but I'm new to the game, so.
You don't think a rehabilitation is the solution?
I, rehabilitation of what? You're, you're, you're laying tractor trailers on there that shouldn't be on there to begin with. Yeah, I, I don't care what size they're, they, these guys can't navigate that bridge.
So if tractor trailers were prohibited from thirty two?
Yeah, and that section, whatever, wherever they're coming from, to come, we, we mostly see the issue heading south uh on, on, because they come across and that's where we, we get the most of our damage, but I, I've seen most of it. I don't know, Craig, have you been up there a lot more? Have you seen?
Very rarely are they coming northbound, but the southbound, I think, a couple of things if, short term.
I'm sorry, you know what? Because for the folks who are joining remotely, they can't hear you because you're not on a mic.
Yeah.
And just um tell us who you are.
My name's Craig Forbes, work for the Thompsons. Um, if the stop bar in short term, not engineered study, that stop line was moved north a little bit and maybe a um they don't see the stop sign, the trucks come down there at a pretty gr- good rate of speed. They get to the bridge, they realize I'm in trouble. Probably other words come out of their mouth and then there's cars behind them, so they can't back up and it, it becomes an issue. If their stop sign was to be moved back some, temporary solution, that way they could prepare and swing out in the other lane and get over the bridge easier. Um, if, if you look, for example, the Rabbit Run Bridge, just north of New Hope. They did, they dismantled that bridge, they straightened it out and there's been very, very little problem since then, so maybe the, the board can use that as a little bit of ammunition, how that's been a success to this, a very similar problem. And say that's in Silverwood Township, just north of New Hope, but it's sa- same thing, it was a bridge that was, that was where you had to come around a ninety degree bend around, they straighten that bridge out some, not all the way, and it's really solved the issues there. I mean, I'm, I'm a past fire chief in, in New Hope area and responded to many calls there and the calls have greatly diminished since then. So, and there, there's, there's no maintenance, there's no electronics, there's no, no anything on that, just because it's a much easier roadway to navigate, so would be option six on that.
So E- either way, either way, but whatever's gotta be done there, it's gonna affect our business, we realize it. However, it was, with this alternative three that you're talking, talking about, all I see is, okay, they're gonna close the road, they're gonna redo it for a couple of months, we're gonna lose business, it's not gonna be good for business, they open it, we're gonna go right back to the same thing. And they're gonna wind up having to do the bridge over again. Now we got stoplights in.
Mr. Thompson, do you think trucks are good for your business?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Only the trash truck and the delivery truck, but they're not tractor trailers.
Okay, so, so if, if the township were to be um eh kind of encouraging and ad- encouraging PennDOT and advocating for a solution that prohibits tractor trailers from thirty two?
Period. From that, from wherever that section is where, if they're coming south, that they have an exit, I don't even know what road it would be. Whether, yeah, it's like pick a road to get through Tinnicum to get out to six eleven. Um, but i- if there was an alternative that, if they're coming south, they see a sign says, no tractor trailers beyond this, this point. Uh, you know, local deliveries o- only or whatever you wanna call. It's, it's, it may help that situation. Plus, they get stuck on the bridge, they get, they get arrested or get a ticket or fined because one, they're ruining the bridge, two, they're stopping commerce and traffic on, on the, on the bridge, which is a, a big problem. I mean, it's, you know, it's, I, I have people texting me all the time, oh, I can't get up there for lunch today because there's a, a truck on the bridge again. So it's, it's a constant issue. It really is.
Yeah.
Mr. Thompson, would you be interested in, in doing a, a write-up on what you just said here? We're actually having a meeting with PennDOT next week about tractor trailers on that road.
Okay.
And um we'll have the video also to back up what you have to say.
Okay.
And, and to answer your question about, there is no exit really, from the time you come across the Milford Bridge, unless you go north, there's no exit.
Two is a lot of the truck drivers use a car-based GPS system, there are truck-based GPS systems, but they don't spend the money on that and it's not gonna point it out to them. So whether you, you can make a law, they're starting to come down the road because they're not gonna say it and they, they get trapped in it, so it's still gonna, you can make a law, but it's still gonna be an issue with it.
Well, we're gonna, we don't wanna get too much of a discussion. We're actually, we talked about this at the last township meeting. And the chief uh said the, the main thing is they're doing is they're avoiding tolls. Now, if you put in to the GPS, even a truck GPS, that you're looking for a toll-free route out of New Jersey, the Milford Bridge is it, that's it. And once you get across it and you start heading south, there is no exit until you get down to Point Pleasant. So, so this is an issue I've been working on for the whole entire year, it seems. I've been working on it off and on with the various townships up and down and, and communities up and down the river to try to get the tractor trailers off of it completely in order to just put it on the GPS, the tracker tires aren't allowed, period. That'll go on the GPS and it'll stop them. There was another solution that came about, but then PennDOT backed out of it and we're just, we're gonna have a meeting next week about it, so that's.
I, I could tell you, the, the bridge that I referred to earlier, the Rabbit Run Bridge area.
I, I'm familiar with the bridge.
When I was chief, I'm sitting in my chief's car and I watched the tractor trailer hit my engine right in that bridge and it just drug the trailer right down the side of my engine. I ended up having State, New Jersey State Police catch them up on two oh two, but again, that, that road's actually limited to twenty eight foot trucks.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it is anymore.
You, you may be right on that, but at the time, it was twenty eight.
The time, they, they changed all that in twenty eighteen, that's a whole other thing.
It's not an issue now, since they did straighten out option six on this and it, it say it has not been an issue.
They straightened it out and widened it, they did both. So it's, it's, I, I drive, that's what I did for a living. So I used that bridge quite often and it was, you know, the changes were, it made it a lot easier to get across it. I don't know it was necessarily well, it's better for, for what you were involved with, but um I don't know what, how the rest of the community feels about it then, or not in touch with them, but, but whatever.
It's been positive, but because it didn't, didn't affect any, really any of the product, it affected during the construction, but since then, it's, it's been pretty positive from my, my feedback that I've heard in the community, so.
So Mr. Thompson, Mr. Thompson, if tractor trailers were prohibited from thirty two, um would you support then a rehabilitation of this bridge?
Sure, with, with that, with that lights. I mean, I, I think with a light sitting in the front of the Golden Pheasant, it's gonna look at it, plus people are in there dining, looking out the window, looking at the river and they got a light shining in red or green or yellow light shining in their eye.
Yeah.
And you just might as well just close the doors.
When, when we had our meeting back in October of twenty two um in connection with their first proposal, we were concerned about the replacement and straightening out alternative, because we were, we recognized that the existing alignment of the bridge as it stands now has a traffic calming effect, which you benefit from.
Yes.
Because your patrons are backing out of their parking spots, especially the, the ones nearest to the north end of the bridge are the handicap spots.
But I, I will point, point this out, coming south from the north on Route thirty two, there, there's a speed limit sign right in front of the, the, the Golden Pheasant, forty miles an hour. Those pe- people go up to that stop sign cruising at forty, forty, forty-five miles an hour, fifty and, and hit the brakes right at the bottom of that bridge now. It needs to be, the, 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 the speed needs to be lowered on thirty two essentially and, and let people know that there, there's, you know, eh, there's a traffic hazard ahead, which is that bridge.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I agree, it's a calming effect, it's very nice. You're sitting out on the, on the back lawn of the pheasant and the cars are going by and people are looking into the backyard, it's, it's great, it's beautiful, and canal's right there. But eh there's, there's a lot that needs to be done, not traffic lights.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
Can I add a comment to that?
Only if you come up to the microphone.
Sorry, Eric.
Uh, Craig DeGroot, Tinnicum resident. I think we all understand, the problem is
I think we all understand the problem is not the cars. I mean, do we have a lot of collisions on that bridge? Chief, maybe you could answer and follow up. The problem are the trucks. So lights aren't going to solve that problem. The lights are going to be ridiculous. It's going to, you know, dampen the whole aesthetic of that roadway. But if we can keep the trucks off, then we have the problem resolved because I think they fixed it on Wednesday and Saturday it got hit again.
Yeah. I, I think when it comes to car traffic, like vehicular, just car traffic, we do, we don't have collisions, but we do sometimes have some road rage. Road ragey type incidents there.
Testiles thrown out.
A lot of it?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, but I think with improved non-illuminated, non-electronic signage, that, that would be eliminated.
Yeah. Keeping the trucks off.
Just to be clear, PennDOT's concern are their, one of their, um, criteria of alternate three. And what their claim is, if they put the lights there, the trucks, the truck, the legal trucks can make the turn. Um, so their, their premises, people are going to stop far enough back on both sides because the lights are going to be red and a truck will be able to navigate without hitting the structure. That there, they, they have, I'm just saying that's PennDOT's claim that they designed, they ran a design vehicle of a WB 50 and it can make that turn if the cars are stopped back further away on both sides of the approach.
They can still make that turn without, with the stop as it is now.
Right. But I guess what's happening potentially is drivers or truck drivers may be panicking or turning.
Bad driver.
Either large. And they're running over the stuff because they, maybe they saw a vehicle coming in the other lane and tried to get over. And at that point in time, they can't make the turn.
As was mentioned by Mr. Thompson, if you get to that stop sign, having driven these things, when you get to the stop sign, you're already too late to adjust for it and you need to back up and re, re-approach. And the difficulty there is A, there's people behind you inevitably because you're always driving slower than people want to in a truck. And B, swinging out into the lane like that without any control from the other direction, people don't know you're doing that. And now you've got a standoff there with a tractor trailer. And I've seen that a couple of times on River Road when I've gotten behind this kind of a situation. And it's very difficult to get people to understand that they need to get out of the way or nobody's going anywhere. So the, the lights would solve that problem. And I'm, I'm sure that, that PennDOT was looking at that as that's going to be the solving of the problem because the people in the opposite direction will stop. And the tractor trailer does have then the room and the opportunity to make the swing he needs to make. Now, I think that with a WB 67, you can make that turn if you have enough advanced warning and enough space with the bridge as it is now. I haven't tried it, but you're saying PennDOT ran the model? I've done it in a 48 foot long trailer and I got around there without too much trouble. So, you know, that was Waring's trailer. I think that's 48 foot, their flatbed. And I got around there. That was the axles, their, their axles are sucked all the way up. So their concept is, is, is accurate that if they put the lights back there, the truck will be able to maneuver around there and have the opportunity to do so with a, with a, with an unfettered green light. That's, that's what they're, and I think they're.
Reinforce the need to remove trucks from 32. Route Tinnicum, south of there, going through, you know, the bridges, three, four, five. The road is too narrow. It's too weak. It's collapsing into the canal. And that's because again of trucks. There's another reason to get them off the load.
I hope this is why I've been working on it. That's why we're all out there. That's why I've been working on it for a year, but it's very difficult.
Hi, everyone. I'm John Romelli. So I remember a while back at one of the meetings where we discussed this bridge, um, a woman had mentioned, she was a historian, I believe, that Route 32, the underlayman was never constructed or built or sufficient. I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact words, for trailer trucks and heavy equipment. That heavy loads were brought up the canal. So I agree with Craig and Mr. Thompson about trucks being the issue. And I think that a lot of us look at that bridge as a stopgap um, preventing as many trailers to get through as possible. Because the trailers come flying down River Road. They tear up the road. PennDOT can't keep up with the repairs. Um, I'd also point out that a lot of people have dry stacked sellers when you start getting into Point Pleasant. And I don't know, and I'm not trying to be dramatic here, but I don't know that a large volume of, um, of trailers are going to be conducive with dried stack sellers along, uh, you know, certainly in Point Pleasant. The, John, you were able to get through because you were a professional driver.
Actually, it's because I knew it was coming.
Okay, okay.
And, and it's, and, and the axles were sucked all the way up on my trailer and they're already up there. So if you're not prepared that way, you're going to have a problem.
I, I agree. I hear you. Uh, not that I know anything about driving a truck, but I'll take your word for it. The problem we have today is that drivers aren't trained. They don't necessarily have the skillset of a professional. They're just getting in the truck, trying to make a living. I don't begrudge them trying to make a living, but by the, if they're able to succeed getting through the bridge here, their GPS is telling them to go up, um, Tinnicum Hill Road. Tahican Hill Road, sorry, Tahican Hill Road, where they're tearing apart the bridge that divides Tinnicum from Plumstead. There's also the issue of there's good GPS and there's bad GPS. Uh, good haulers will pay for high-quality GPS, less, more people who are, don't want to spend the money for it will pay for GPS that will take their drivers over these roads, uh, over this bridge and up, um, Tahican Hill Road. So it's, I don't think we have as much a bridge problem as we have a truck problem. So I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Brandt, um, uh, speaking on behalf of the Tinnicum Civic Association as president, um, I just want to reiterate briefly, the concern primarily is, I think all of us are aware, the trucks, not the bridge. I'm not in support of eight lights down at the bridge. I know we're just outside the construction zone, but as we discussed two years ago at the consulting party meeting was the concern for the national, you know, the historic registry of the mill, it's being seven feet from the road. Anything that allows more truck traffic at higher speeds, um, if they're unfettered in any way is a great concern to us and the integrity of the structure and our, um, uh, customers and patrons, uh, et cetera, trying to cross the road, which we're trying to solve other issues there in general speed issues, but um, this would only exacerbate it. And we all know the road's not designed, you know, for this. And we also have great concerns, you know, when we just talk in the community about trucks going in opposite directions and the space between them, space on the shoulder, are there bicyclists? None of it makes sense. So while we're focusing all this attention on the bridge alone, there's things to solve there. But I just wanted to reiterate from our vantage point, this is a great interest all the way up and down, you know, the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Carl Luther, resident. Um, I agree with pretty much what everyone has said here, but I think there's not an option to not have a traffic light leaving the bridge the way it is. Uh, I also think that it's unrealistic to think that even if there's a law in place that doesn't allow for trucks to come down, they will, some will come down and they'll still be faced with the same bridge issue. Um, as far as the bridge being the way it is and not being a problem without trucks, it's a problem with, when I drive to that bridge, I get a little nervous because I've had incidents on that bridge where I'm faced off with someone. Uh, being a local, I kind of know how it works, but not everyone does. And you're, and that's still not going to solve the problem. I don't think the lights are realistic. Um, I don't like the idea of expanding the bridge, but I feel that's really the only option, um, to keep the same, the same direction of the bridge, but rehabilitate it and make it a little wider. Um, I just don't see keeping it the same way. I don't see the lights. I don't see that destroy that area. There are no traffic lights from the center of New Hope all the way up to Regalsville. And this would have eight traffic lights there? Horrible. I mean, I just can't imagine, and leaving it the way it is, it's not going to be an option because they'll, they'll just wind up doing what they want to do. And they'll put in a straightaway. And I don't think we want that either because that will increase the speed. It'll be bad for the restaurant, for people backing out. I really think the only alternative is to possibly rehabilitate the bridge and widen it a little bit to the south. And I think that's option four. Thank you.
Yes.
My name's Dan Allman. I have two things. You've mentioned about maintenance on the stoplights. And I think I've seen um, information where one stoplight could be four, five, $600 a year, just in electric costs. Now, maybe it's a combination, might be a little cheaper, but let's just use that number times eight. That's like 50 grand. The stoplights. Stoplights can't happen. And then, um, the thing I think we really have to think about, we have a gem here, an historical gem. We all know that. And we don't want to do anything to that area that compromises what's been sitting there for hundreds of years. And which now most of us all eating dinner there. We like it. And it's just.
Are you referring to the Golden Pheasant as the historical gem?
Yes.
Not the bridge?
Not the bridge. Yeah. Thank you for correcting. Yeah. Well, that's a good point. But you know, the Golden Pheasant, we have to protect that. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Okay. Well, seeing no additional public comment, I would invite our public works department and our police department to come forward and just give us your feedback on the proposal.
Um, I hear what everybody has said and I kind of agree with everybody. I don't know that traffic lights are going to be the solution. Um, but if nothing changes, nothing changes and we're still stuck with the truck issues. So even if we address trucks and get them restricted, every truck will not, not come down that road all of a sudden. So I think something has to change.
My opinion, if you widen the bridge, that would be an acceptable, you know, conclusion. But putting traffic lights is definitely not the answer. Not for the aesthetics, number one, but it's not going to cure the problem at the bridge. You're still going to have a narrow bridge and you're still will have backups and accidents. And if you do put traffic lights in, it's going to cause even more of a problem on the road. It's going to back the traffic up even farther to other intersections. I can see with a traffic light, it backing up the traffic all the way back to Tinnicum Creek or even to Stage Cage. Because on the weekends, you know how much traffic is on that route. Everybody knows. So you're going to cause even more problems. And so my opinion is widening of the roadway would be a proper answer.
And maintaining the current alignment.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you both. Rich?
I have a lot more.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Um, I saw in the plan, there were no stop signs proposed for, uh, option four and five, which is the same alignment, but being widened. I, I think that would help things. Um, I spoke to John about it and John said they usually don't use stop signs to slow traffic down. But I would ask that you request that. I think that would help. It would slow things down a little bit. Uh, instead of someone, you, something like, like John said, he made the turn because he knew the bridge was, was there. There's a stop sign, you stop and then you proceed, uh, and, but you're not going, you're not going very fast, obviously at that point. And I just think it would be very helpful to keep things in order by having a stop sign or new sign.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. Come up to the mic.
Uh, Dr. Richard Malikis, 421 River Road. The comment to that is, and just a recollection going back the original part of it, PennDOT's original plan was to put a road straight over the canal. And, and our fear, and I worked closely with Laura Barnes at the time to prevent that from happening because the fear was about the Golden Pheasant Restaurant. As was said, it's a gem of a restaurant and the fear of whether having a stop sign there, a light there, is that it's going to back up traffic in front of the Golden Pheasant. And the cars that have to back out of there are, will be in a severe dangerous position from the safety reasons. And the importance here and how we approach this and how you write your letter is to emphasize over and over again, the historic nature of your structure. It's critical, critical, but that's really what is embedded in the law in terms of looking at this road design. My suggestion is certainly the renovation and Eleanor, I appreciate John, I appreciate to be able to focus on this from the truck angle. Because whatever it is, the solution, it has to be a reduction of trucks on that bridge. Not only for the Golden Pheasant, for the safety in the area, but there are so many homes, so many homes from the Golden Pheasant right down to Point Pleasant that are literally built right on the road. If you look at the Stover Mill, you walk out the trial within one foot, you're on the road. So whatever we can do, and John, I know you're a fierce advocate for this, Rich, all of you, is the reduction of truck traffic for safety reasons, for the historic nature of not only your entity, the Stover Mill, and that's where the power is. The power is, and they can't move forward. And that's why they didn't do their original plan to put a road right through with no stop signs. And the concern was, can you imagine going through the Golden Pheasant, boom, right down River Road? It would be disastrous. So we made some good headway in terms of them dropping that option. Okay. So now the next part is to work through the truck traffic, whatever we can do, historic nature, getting letters from residents along River Road, whatever we can do to be able to bring forth to them the safety issues that are involved here. That's just my point of view.
Yes, please.
I'm Sue Walsh, part of the Civic Association and the concern for the Stover Mill. Um, I just have two questions. One is, um, the widening of the road or bridge, is that just to accommodate two cars so that there's no stopping? Or is that to accommodate the trucks?
Yeah, well, in the description, so in the report on pages three to four, it, um, there's a three paragraph, maybe a two paragraph description of what that alternative looks like for widening the existing bridge. And in order to avoid right-of-way acquisitions from both the Golden Pheasant and Sandcastle, it would be, um, a widening to the south. It says here in the body of the alternative analysis report that it would allow unimpeded WB 50, uh, tractor trailer truck movements. However, Kurt identified from maybe one of the appendix, appendices, that it would actually accommodate a WB 67.
Yeah, actually I do mention that.
Which is the largest tractor trailers.
I think they mentioned that actually in alternative five.
Alternative four, five and six.
Right. So should a WB 67 become lost and end up down there because they're lost, that they would be able to get across that bridge if necessary?
Okay. So we're really.
This is something that's stuck with me, but I was going to discuss that in my comments because I, I actually had it on my mind about accommodating various trucks in that bridge.
Okay. Because I was thinking it sounds like PennDOT doesn't even understand the concern for the bridge, which they're putting lights up to accommodate cars and cars aren't the problem. PennDOT like not get it.
Well, I, I mean, I, in our, in the township's letter to PennDOT from two years ago, um, we did acknowledge that the, the road, the entire length of Route 32 cannot support large truck traffic. And that as of 2022, the road was. And that as of twenty twenty-two, the road was literally collapsing into the canal in sections north and south of the Golden Pheasant Bridge. Increasing stress on the roadway structure from increased frequency of large truck traffic will accelerate the deterioration of this important route along which many of Tencum's businesses are situated. And we, we also noted that even if the bridge could accommodate larger trucks, the roadway itself can't. Especially trucks moving in opposite directions. There just isn't room in many sections of it, particularly south, there's no shoulder. Um, you know, to the east and there's a cliff wall and no shoulder to the west. Our comments will, um, remind PennDOT of the, kind of the natural features of the roadway and wh- what is really safe in terms of vehicular traffic.
It is also a scenic roadway.
Yes, it is a scenic roadway. Well, there are a lot of historic properties along thirty-two. Its designation is as a minor arterial roadway, um, which, given the amendment that John mentioned in our state law, um, those are tier, minor arterial roadways have been opened up to truck traffic um, since twenty twenty.
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen. So, um, but I think, you know, we all are aware of all of the warehouses that have, um, been built kind of all around where we live. Um, and I think that that's a part of what, part of the reason why we're experiencing this increased frequency. I will note that Chief Madden's comments at our board meeting last week, um, she said that there had been five trucks, five trucks stopped, three of them were sighted, and they were all coming from very distant places, heading to very distant places. So, they're coming from New England, heading to like Virginia and, and beyond. So, it really is, they're, they're just trying, the, the explanation that they're giving to our officers is that they are just following a no toll route, um, which is sending them across the Milford Bridge.
It's important to note that also in that time period, the Scars Falls Bridge was, project was completed and became a toll, a toll route, which previously it was not. So, I, I think that has as much to do with it as anything else. And see, they're looking for a toll-free route. And if I'm looking at a toll-free route from North Jersey, I don't think I want to use River Road as a over, uh, two ninety-five, they call it now. So, I, um, I think that had something to do with it also. There's probably a couple contributing factors here. And the, and again, the location of some of these warehouses are getting closer to us in New Jersey, and it, it's just a short toll-free route. They don't realize the trouble they're going to run into.
Carl?
Hi, Carl Ruth Hart again. Um, one observation I did notice, um, the width of the bridge, they're proposing
Oh, yeah.
Forty-one or forty-three, is it forty-three feet?
Inches or something.
I, I, I looked at the Point Pleasant Bridge, um, I just used the measuring tool on the GIS system, which is fairly accurate. It looks to be thirty-five feet wide with a sidewalk. But it does seem a bit excessive, the width. I, I, I think it should be widened, but what they're proposing seems to be a little overboard, because it, it talks about, it looked, if you look at the diagram, you're looking at aprons that are probably ten feet wide. Um, the Point Pleasant Bridge, I don't believe, has been damaged. Uh, so maybe there's, uh, maybe there's something there
It has.
It has.
That you can propose to them, because it, it's just, it just seems excessively wide, what they proposed.
Okay. Rich, any thoughts?
I want to hear what John has to say about the trucks. He said he had some comments about that before I make.
Well, the amazing with the trucks is the, the, it seems to me as if PennDOT is trying to accommodate trucks more than anything else with this bridge and to stop the damage on the bridge from, from trucks. They're trying to make it such that whatever truck happens to find its way down there will get across without damage. It's not taking into account what's going on in our community and what's going on beyond this bridge. As has been mentioned, Eleanor mentioned it, the entire road is a problem when you start getting into a large truck on it. I, I had trouble with a ninety-six inch wide truck. I can't imagine having a hundred-two inch wide trailer and then having another hundred-two inch wide trailer coming at me. So, the edges of the road are deteriorating down and the, and the guardrails falling into the, into the canal. And I don't see any reason why PennDOT should encourage big trucks. That being said, I don't want to see an option that has traffic lights in there to be controlling cars. Because they're going to want to do that anyway, whether trucks are going to be prohibited from the road or not, they're still going to want these traffic lights in there. I see the concept of their design. They want to have the traffic light on River Road to stop the traffic on River Road. They also want to have the traffic lights in these parking lots, because they don't know, you don't know when you pull out of the Sandcastle Winery, whether it's the northbound traffic or the southbound traffic that has the green light, so there can be a hazard there that we already have and actually be exacerbated. Because now people have a green light, they're not going to slow down and stop like they do now for the stop sign. So I can see where PennDOT wants to put all these lights in. The point that was made about backup of traffic is absolutely accurate. It was a point I was going to bring up. The wait time for a green light there, if there's action at the, at the winery and there's action at the parking lot, which you'll have in the summertime, I think can be extensively long. And then it can back up traffic. I've seen traffic back up to, uh, to, uh, Tencum Creek Road rather quickly when a truck gets caught on there. And there's all of a sudden, you got twenty, twenty, thirty cars there. So, so, you know, I, I don't see, I see a problem with the traffic light situation in a single lane situation, I really do. Um, I really bristle though at having to have these bridges built a little wider so that it can accommodate a truck that comes down there, because it just, it will be an encouragement for them to come down there. Word gets out, oh yeah, you can get through that bridge, it's okay. And right now, I don't know, it seems like word isn't getting out anyway. You can't get through that bridge. It's a nice limiting factor. Our meeting next week with PennDOT, the comments we've had about trucks here are going to, is, are going to be very, very helpful next week with our meeting with PennDOT. Because I've been trying for a year now to get them to realize we have an issue on this entire road, and it's not just Tencum. Plumstead has issues now with damage from trucks. They have buildings that are right on the road. Lumberville has buildings that are right on the road. I think that's still Plumstead. Solbury has buildings that are right on the road. I mean, they're literally, as Dr. Belukas pointed out, s- a step and a half off the road. The golden, the black bass, the front doors, right on the road. So there, it really is traffic that's incongruent, the truck traffic on there. But that being said, I still think that for cars, having the traffic lights is something that does not work in the township. And I don't see PennDOT relenting and saying we're not going to put traffic lights there. They're going to want to put those traffic lights there. And as much as I would hate to get rid of the historic bridge, I don't want the area being compromised historically with four, eight, six traffic lights over many, they're going to putting on there. So there's an option four there that, that I look at as being the most powerful. I don't like it entirely, but it's a compromised position that I feel I'm, I'm in favor of, where the bridge is kept on the same alignment. It is widened, and we have, I would prefer also to have the stop lines, stop signs there as a, as a calming device going across the bridge. I, 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 I'm not real fond of the idea. I, I don't like it. But it's, to me, the best option we're going to end up being presented to the township at this point. That is good for both the road and our community.
John, I have one quick question.
Well, you'll have to go up there.
Oh, have to go up there again?
Yeah. Well, everybody wants to hear your question, right?
Is there a federal fiscal incentive for having trucks on River Road being a state road? Being, I mean, it's just a road. I, I was told that there is not.
I don't think the government cares one way or the other. They thought they don't get anything out of it.
I, I.
I had heard that there was, when allowing trucks on a state road, that there is a federal incentive, fiscal, for going into. Yeah, oh yeah, definitely.
Oh, that I'm not aware of.
Some of their ongoing resistance, perhaps for not allowing trucks, because they would lose federal money coming in.
I'm not going to.
That might be worth just pursuing before you have that meeting.
Well, I'm not going to go into too many conspiracy, I mean, not conspiracy theory, but you know, it might be true. Yeah. I mean, I've heard that it's that, it's also a trucking industry that would prefer to have the road open.
Probably.
I have no idea, maybe it's a combination of both.
But just, yeah, before going in, that just be.
Yeah, I'm just more concerned.
It's more design related and where they're getting their funding from and, and that they're following the process, uh, for the design. Because if they're agreeing to alternative three, that, that does not.
Yeah, that doesn't.
So there must be exceptions in the sys, in their system as far as funding.
Okay, thank you. I think that's my full feeling, same.
Please come, yep.
It's just a question, really, I mean, it's not a very, uh, uh, sexy solution, but if we widen the road, have a stop sign, is there, um, any reason that just simple alternating traffic signs with the stop sign to coach people who aren't from the area to realize, oh, I'm supposed to wait until somebody else comes that might, I mean, it doesn't sound like a big solution, but at a minimum, if we cut the lights, why couldn't there be a sign that just coaching people, be courteous?
I guess for that, many times.
I mean, it's a simple, I mean.
Simple solution.
It's a low-tech solution, but it, if the, the lights do get canceled, then why wouldn't we still just go try and do that and help the problem with those people, not trucks?
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, there seems to be a great concern about people not being able to figure out the alternative thing that might coach them.
Well, it's just figuring it out. I think it's also a matter of people not wanting to wait for the next other guy. That's the biggest issue. Yeah.
People don't know.
And not seeing, you might not see both.
Okay.
Yes, please come up. If everyone could please state their name when you come up to the podium for, for a minute.
My name is Dan Allman, and the question I have is, uh, you're having a meeting next week with PennDOT, correct?
Yeah.
Um, are, are, uh, state officials going to be there? Coleman or Labs to help support our township for what we want?
Yes, they are.
Good. And they're aware, what is their position? Or don't they have?
Find out.
You'll find out next week. Okay, because I think that's important, because they can, you know, put some pressure on PennDOT in some subtle ways that can filter down to at least get PennDOT to know that, um, it's not just the residents, but it's our representatives at the state that are all working together to try to take care of this problem and get rid of these damn traffic lights. So, that's all I was thinking.
Thanks, Tim.
Are you, are you planning another meeting, Carl Ruth Hart? Are you planning another meeting after this meeting with PennDOT? Are you making a decision?
We, we have a January third deadline to submit our written comments. Um, and given the holidays, um, I don't think that we will be having a, a follow-up public meeting before that deadline.
Would you be deciding this evening on what alternative to sit with, or?
Um, I mean, I.
I don't, I don't, I, I, I think you should have some time, obviously, because all the feedback you had.
Right.
Also the meeting with PennDOT next week, which would help you go in a certain direction or not, but.
Of course. I mean, I, I, I think it, it is possible that what is ultimately communicated to PennDOT is not the township's crystal clear vision of what we want. It is a response to what they are proposing.
Um, I just think it'd be important to, for the public to, to know what your response would be. And usually that occurs at a public meeting.
Well, um.
Just, just.
So we'd have a special meeting.
Just, just a thought, just a thought.
So that's a possibility.
I don't, I know you, it's a lot of meetings, I understand, uh, and, but I think that it's really important for our township.
I think the response could also be based on the residents' input. It could address all.
Well, it would.
Option, yeah.
It would reflect, I mean, that's the point of this meeting.
But they're asking you for, to pick something.
They're asking to, we, we have an opportunity to comment. That's all. Not, we don't get to pick and choose. We have an opportunity to comment on what they provided us.
Great.
If I can clarify, this is not a decision. This is, if this is the township and the Board of Supervisors listening to the residents today, taking all that information, having our, uh, our staff do a letter, uh, create a letter, along with our Board of Supervisors, reviewing that letter and having input and, and taking your input. And that's why we're asking for your letter also, if you could please get that to myself. So we can incorporate all of this information, and this, all of this information will be presented to PennDOT. That's really the goal, to have a response to PennDOT, to tell them, this is what our constituents are saying. This is how the Board of Supervisors feels, this is how our engineer feels, our manager feels, et cetera. And this, it's really a response, it's not a decision.
Okay.
So there'll be more meetings in the future, but not this year in December, because we just really can't do that with,
It's fine.
You know, with the holiday and so forth, but, but I just want to clarify that. Um, there'll, there'll be more.
Hi, it's John Romelli again. Um, I don't know if this helps the cause or not, but I, um, we overlook this a lot, but there is the Point Pleasant Historic District on the National Register of Historic Places. And I don't know if this helps you or not. It goes from, uh, my house all the way down to the Point Pleasant Bridge and straddles both sides of River Road. Again, I don't know if it helps or not, but I just thought I'd throw it out. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Please, it's okay, you can just come on up.
Um, in response to your comment.
If you could please state your name, please.
Richard, Richard Belukas. Would it be helpful, in addition to Mr. Thompson's letter, if we got updated letters from the Stover Mill, from the winery, from all those entities?
So, yes.
That could go with your response. So whoever could do the outreach to those groups, like Sue and Larry are here now.
So, all of those entities, all of the one oh six consulting parties who participated in twenty twenty-two received this communication directly from PennDOT. So, the township doesn't need to be involved. Those entities are welcome to submit their own comments. It would be helpful if you just copy the township, so we can see what you're saying, but, um, that community, they've, they're already looped in and it's up to them if they want to participate.
We can make phone calls to them.
You can make phone calls, sure. Any correspondence you would like to make. Thank you. Yes, we would be.
Uh, yes, this is the fifth time I've been up here tonight. Um, one of the reasons that I believe four would be the best alternative, I think, and a new bridge might be nice. But with the history of PennDOT, I don't know what alignment it might wind up being. I said, with a, with a reconstruction of the bridge that's already there, they want to go south. We pretty much know the, the alignment at the end, and that's one of the reasons that I would support number four. Thank you.
Okay. Hold on, wait until you're up here before you start talking, please.
Realize.
Please state your name.
Yes, and your name, please.
Richard, Richard Belukas.
The downside to a new bridge is the foundations are historic.
I understand.
So it's just, we just don't want to eradicate the entire bridge, knowing that.
Okay.
Yeah, that was kind of my point in wanting number four, is that this is more or less an extension of what's already there. And I feel like you're more inclined to get the matching materials and, and such for the bridge, as opposed to something with, whatever they're going to come up with for foundations and what have you. So the, the extension to me is a little bit of a less impact on the historic nature of the bridge. It's not gone, it's just added there too, and in a like manner. So, that's what I'd like to.
Whatever bridge we do get.
Your name.
Craig Degroot. Can we get the Camelbacks? As our, like on Bridge Three, Bridge Four, at New Hope, has it over on the side of the bridges, the bridge used to have it, but they got knocked over so many times, they just now have guardrails. So, for aesthetics, consistency up and down the river and the canal, to have the Camelbacks added would be very, very nice.
Okay, last call for public comment. Last call. Okay, thank you. Rich?
Well, I heard everything and I, I believe that the, the work that John's working on with regarding getting rid of, um, a lot of the trailer trucks on River Road, if not all of the longer ones, that's certainly the way to go. But the more I look at this, the more I think about it, the alternative four is probably the right way to go. Uh, maybe a limited widening, as Carl had pointed out, that might be a, another thing to look into. And certainly some stop signs, not lights, with stop signs on either side. That would be my, uh, my thoughts.
Okay.
So, as proposed, alternative four, um, is the widening of the existing bridge. On page four at the top, it says the bridge end abutments would be widened approximately twenty-four feet, requiring a driveway adjustment to the tow path parking area and boat launch access. An approximately five-foot tall. An approximately five foot tall retaining structure would be needed to widen the east side of the north approach roadway and the west side of the shifted tow path. So to me, having, having learned a lot from our resident historian Catherine Auerbach, you know, I, I have come to appreciate even more the historical significance of the tow path. And, you know, I would want to see more detail on what is contemplated there by shifting the tow path. I also think putting a five foot tall retaining structure on the west side of the tow path would be a significant change. I don't, I can't think of any bridge crossing on the tow path. I've cycled it once from Bristol to Easton, where there is a retaining wall on the west side of the tow path. So that would be significant. It also indicates that the stop signs would be removed with this widening of the existing bridge, that the horizontal curve radius would be fifty five feet minimum, corresponding to a fifty, fifteen mile per hour design speed with the stop signs removed. And again, I think I would want to see
Yeah.
what that looks like.
I think that what they, also the reason for the five foot retaining wall, why do they need to put one in there?
I think it might be supporting structure for the span. Kurt, do you see that?
Yeah, they don't show it on their alternative, but I believe once you expand the structure over, the elevation is going to be up higher. So they're going to need that structure to retain the embankment and shift the tow path.
Yeah.
Till we have plans, we really don't know what it is. What we're looking at is sketches.
Yeah, they're concepts.
There's not a lot of detail with that.
It's true. Well, I mean, I think in terms of consensus, I think it's pretty clear there is zero appetite for traffic lights. Is that, do we agree with that? Okay. And it also seems that we have consensus around we, we are not interested in maintaining the status quo. Is that right?
That was unconcerned. That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's a lot to have identified. I think we also, is there consensus around having this project to the extent that it can protect the historical integrity of that area? Is that something that we, that's important to this board?
Certainly.
Yes. I mean, I, I think that that's why I would go with four as opposed to five. Because I don't think five accomplishes that. I can't be sure that five would accomplish that. Let's put it this way. We'd, we'd be depending on Pendot coming up with a design that's congruent with what's there now.
Okay.
Whereas with option four, they're adding one to what's there. So they kind of, they're kind of forced into a design.
So maybe what we're, what we're thinking of is a scaled back version of number four, widening, but not too wide.
And maybe not that one.
A little bit wider, but not too wide and stop signs.
While we're pinning down everything, I think we should also say that the concern is no trucks.
It's paramount, really. It's, and for the benefit of everyone joining us remotely, everyone in the room is nodding their heads. Yes, on this.
That's the umbrella issue.
And it's been one for quite some time. And it's, it's something like, I've been working pretty diligently with it. Judith has only been here since July, but I've been working on it since probably since January and trying to get our, our communities together up and down the road.
Yeah.
And, and.
Okay.
I've got support from all the communities. Let's, three, two out of the three or three out of the, two out of the three are like, yeah, let's get rid of them completely. And another one says, well, yeah, we really should have a study. So that's where we are with that, with our, our neighboring communities.
Now, the irony is.
Hold on, you have to come up here. If it's, if it's significant enough to say, please say it on the mic.
I just whispered it in his ear, but ultimately.
Yes, your name.
I'm sorry, Larry Brandt, again. If we solved the trucks completely, which I know isn't a reality, there'd be no need to do anything to the bridge, frankly.
Well, that's arguable.
Well, I mean, it is arguable, but, and I'm not saying we don't, but the problems continue to be about the trucks and the bridge. Yes, we have alternating traffic issues and so on, but really that's been the genesis of all this, hasn't it?
And, and my recollection is prior to an emergency repair from maybe six years ago at this point, the stop signs were at the base of the approaches.
Right.
And there was no landscaping it outside of the Golden Pheasant, and you were, you were able to see under the bridge across the canal if it was clear to proceed in both directions. So I think it was the.
Change.
The, the location changed for the stop signs. And then there, there were some improvements made there that.
Understood, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's the lion's share of the problem is the trucks at that bridge, I think.
That is true. Thank you. Okay. So what is the date of your meeting next week?
The sixteenth. What day is that? Monday. Okay.
But that's not, that's not a format like this, though.
No, no, it's, no, it's an informal in, in-house meeting just with local legislators, myself, staff and John.
Okay. Um, I'm not going to that meeting. Are you?
No.
Okay. So then.
Thank you for your help. So the, the original idea was not to wait for that meeting or our comment back to Pendot regarding this. That was the original concept, but when I did ask for relief for the extension and we were granted, I was looking at it in a different light. So depending on how the board would like to move forward, I was hoping that we could have a, a letter written by the township engineer, taking all the information from today and any input that all of us have put into that letter, have that letter come back to all of us for comment and agree, agreeance, and then at that point, have that letter sent off to Pendot. That would provide us with a little bit of leadway now that we have our deadline as of January third, but we can't forget that we do have the holidays and so forth. And the office is closed and, you know, all those things, just, you know, really time wise, we have to figure that out. So I think we do have time if we would like to conglomerate our discussion with Pendot and our local legislators on the sixteenth. I believe we would, but I think we should start the letter now anyway. And actually have comment going back and forth with the board.
Yeah.
And then if there's anything to add, we can add or.
That works.
That could be an addendum to what, to what we send from Kurt.
I can start the draft and then if the township would like to modify and.
So if that's amenable to the Board of Supervisors, that's how I would like to proceed.
That sounds good.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Having no further business here, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay.
On favor.
Happy holidays. Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays.
Just coming up the side.
I thought you were coming up.
No, no.
Say, say something more.
That's an important thing.